Ready? Is he ready? Frank, are you ready?
I'm ready.
I call this meeting to order. This is the September 13th regular meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Moffett, you start with the compliance statement.
Yes, sir. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published. Am I on the... If any board member... Proper public notice of this meeting was published in the local papers on September 10th, 2016, and September 11th, 2016. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Ed requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and Fios channel 46. A full meeting recording will also be made available on Board docs, which can be accessed through the district's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the room if you need to conduct personal business. Could you please rise for the flag?
And Mr. Moffett, the roll call, please.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancomano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Sobolov?
Here.
And Mr. Kleffel?
Here.
A fair warning to the public in attendance. I believe we have a kind of a straightforward agenda tonight, but we will go into executive session before voting on items on the agenda.
Probably 15 minutes.
Fifteen minutes or so. So I apologize in advance. We'll come back, go into public again to vote on the agenda items, and then we will go into executive session again to interview candidates for the Board vacancy. So I ask your indulgence as we go through this meeting, but I don't expect it'll take too long. We start tonight with some recognitions. Superintendent Johnson?
Okay. So tonight, I would like to just publicly recognize the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for all of their work that they've done up to this point since they formed as an organization last year. The Education Foundation has worked tirelessly over the last year, really focusing on the needs of the school district in a way that extends and enriches and enhances the experiences for kids. They have been absolutely nothing but helpful and welcoming and also collaborative in trying to determine what those needs are and what they would actually be raising money for and spending the money on. I can tell you that we are going to be unveiling some of the Education Foundation's purchases at our back-to-school nights that are coming up. So those are things that really have not yet been disclosed, but we have done some seeking and purchasing behind the scenes so that we can do that, and they will be announced at all of the schools' back-to-school nights. In addition to that, on behalf of the leadership team here in the district and the administrators, we also wanted to thank the Education Foundation for their donation to a workshop. It was a phenomenal experience for a group of people. It enabled us to actually spend uninterrupted time from 8:00 in the morning till about 9:00 o'clock at night, one night, and then from 8:00 in the morning until 12:00, 1:00 in the afternoon on the following day, going through everything from our district plans, our action goals, and really developing our vision and our mission for 2016, 2017. None of that would have been possible without the Education Foundation's work. So we appreciate everything that they have done up to this point, and we did not have a representative that was able to attend the meeting tonight, so we will actually give them some letters of thanks and some cards, not only from the administrative team but also some staff members and some kids as well, at the next Board meeting. But publicly, I did want to say thank you to the Foundation for all that it's done. I also wanted to thank David Celebrati, who last spring donated some books to the district, but he also donated $500 worth of professional development for our ABA teachers and for our special education department. And Dr. Celebrati has been a part of the Early Childhood Advisory Committee for a number of years, so we do appreciate his donation. It went to very good use. Mark Matone, one of our lead ABA teachers, was extremely appreciative, and we just wanted to make sure that we recognized his donation and his outreach publicly. So, thank you.
Well, I think it's appropriate to, on behalf of the Board, to thank anyone in the public that's involved in supporting the district. You're still in the spotlight. Do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, a very, very quick one. So I just wanted to recognize the opening of the school year and let you know that the middle school students on the middle school, high school end are really enjoying their additional space. Believe it or not, it made a huge difference. We got some feedback today as well. Just the kids having more room, more locker space, more hallway space, has been extremely helpful. And in addition to that, we talked a little bit about the beginning of a middle school identity for the kids and designing a program around that, and so far, so good. We are working through a challenge and support program at the middle school, and we'll be rolling out an enrichment and a new gifted and talented program at the middle school starting on Monday. In addition, our students at the high school have been kind of flying high lately. You know, we kind of talk about the Red Wings and the idea of soaring. They seem to be in really good spirits. They've been enjoying all of the new educational spaces at the high school. They have also taken great pride in the project that they did over the last couple days by having different groups of high school students welcome our elementary school students to the opening of the school year. In fact, we originally were just going to have a group at each school on opening day, but the kids had a difficult time deciding which group was going to go to which school, so we figured we'll just send them to all of them, and we'll let them rotate. So they really enjoyed that very much. And lastly, the high school students are getting used to and already beginning to kind of talk about and get involved in a brand-new period that we're running this year called a personal growth period. We have students that are already registered for guest speakers. We have students that are registered for academic learning lab help. We have students that are registered already for college visits and instant decision days that are on the guidance calendar, and students that are already beginning to put in their interest requests for SAT prep during the school day, as well as some specialized programs that are happening. So there's a fitness strand that the kids seem to be extremely interested in. We kind of figured that would be the most popular one the first couple weeks of school, but my guess is their interests will definitely shift at some point soon. At the elementary school, the opening of school has been extremely smooth. We have a lot of new programs that we're rolling out this year as well, so the gifted and talented program will also start on Monday. We started the Passport to Learning program yesterday, and when we talk about the smooth opening of school on one hand, we talk about the bumpy opening of Passport to Learning on the other hand. Just being a new program with probably close to 700 students now enrolled in the district, the first couple days are definitely going to be a time to iron out some of the wrinkles. But we took some really good feedback from parents regarding dismissal, particularly at Brant School with our littlest, our smallest students, and we put some different procedures in place today, thanks to Assistant Superintendent Mr. Fitzhugh, and it seemed to go a lot more smoothly. So we're going to be focusing on Wallace and also Calabro in the next two days, and Connors seems to be moving relatively smooth in terms of the after-school program. So there's a number of items, vendors, as well as staff members that are on the agenda for that particular program. And once again, I think I had a question or two from board members. The program is funded solely from family-friendly center grant money, NCLB grant money, as well as the small contributions that a percentage of families are making to the program, along with revenue that was generated from years past after-school programs. So we're actually in pretty good shape with it, and as we continue to kind of iron out some of the little new bumps in the road, I think we will be in very good shape. And the last thing that I just wanted to note on this agenda that I am extremely proud of is that there are a number of paraprofessionals that are on the agenda for approval for this particular program. And I think what's... Why I wanted to recognize this is because we are going to make sure that this program is an inclusive program for all kids. We want to make sure that the program is not accessible to children because they have needs that need to be serviced after school as well. So as a result of that, I think that it's going to be a great experience for all kids to see that they are in classes after school, both in Richmond classes and play-oriented classes with all children, no matter what their needs are. So I think that's something we should all be very proud of, and I think despite some of the bumps, in the long run, it's going to be a great, great program for all families in Hoboken. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Moffett, do you have a report this?
No, I do not at this time.
Okay. That would bring us to committee reports, and Ms. Sobolov, you filled in for Dr. Gold, who was away. Curriculum? She took minutes.
So I wanted to say... Is it on, Frank? I don't think it's on. Hello? Hello? Yes, oh, sorry. Welcome back to everybody, for hope everybody has a fabulous school year. The district was incredibly busy over the summer getting ready for the next school year and also for the opening of school. As Dr. Johnson said, they had an administrative workshop. It was an intensive two-day retreat sponsored by the Hoboken Education Foundation. And then they had the one-day full-staff activity, and that's... It was an activity that included the convocation from Dr. Johnson and multiple staff-led sessions, and approximately 60 staff members were involved in the planning or presentation of this event. Some of the new programs were discussed at the meeting. RTI, which is Response to Intervention, will include English language learning and math from grades kindergarten through six. Students needing additional support in those areas will have assistance during that challenge and support period four times a week. Students who will be tested for gifted and talented, starting in the second grade to rising eighth grade, and there'll be a variety of projects and programs available to them as well as the John Hopkins and the Stanford online programs for those who qualify. They will also be offered during that four days a week. Excuse me. And then there will be an enrichment program period, which will be offered to all students one day a week, and they will have a... Be able to choose through a variety of great appropriate programs, which will last half a year, and then in the second half, they get to choose a different class. The middle school, after-school program, all previously offered seventh and eighth grade clubs, programs, and athletics are now being put into one cohesive program. And so a typical day would be, they would have an activity from dismissal till about 4:15, then have tutoring, and then dinner, which is offered throughout the district for free for children who are in an after-school activity. The middle school orientation was really exciting. Had about 300 families that attended the middle school orientation and the dinner. The students and families had an opportunity to meet with the middle school team toward the expanded facilities, including the new entrance, additional classrooms, and the new science and robotics lab. Over the summer, Project Lead the Way training and professional development continued. Lesson plans and clarity maps are still being worked on. And one note from Hoboken High School, which is now called Hoboken High School. The Hoboken High School Drama Department Advanced Theater Class will be partnering with the Hudson Theater Ensemble to produce an original play entitled Fortune. So that's a very nice community partnership for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Biancomano, do you have a facilities report?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much, Mr. President. The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, September 7th, from 7:35 to 8:15 in Mr. Calligie's office. In attendance, Tom Kleffel, Sharon Angley, Jennifer Evans, myself, Mr. Calligie, and Dr. Johnson. The items discussed: facilities requests. They're pretty standard, nothing out of the ordinary. Now that the ribbon cutting is complete, normal items are being put through such as I-9 and Zog Sports requests. Summer projects updates. The field and the track are done, and does it look great? In case you haven't visited there, I recommend you going there because it looks absolutely terrific. Wallace School Gym is nearly complete with new mats being added along the wall. Brant School Floors were complete before the start of school, as were the Science and Robotics Lab at Hoboken High School in Connors, and 3D printers should be installed by later this week. Lead filters slash retesting of lead. There is a contract on the agenda to install filtration systems on the areas where lead levels were a bit high. These areas will remain out of service until the systems are put in. The district will be retesting in the middle of September when the federal funding finally comes in. The ribbon cutting. The district scheduled to have the ribbon cutting on September 9th before the first football game, but due to the schedule still being in flux, a girls' soccer game was actually the first game on the new field, and the ribbon cutting was held on Thursday, September 8th. For those of you, I know we mentioned September 9th at the last meeting, so I wanted to give clarification on that. Hoboken High School Auditorium Brant Sound Project update. The Brant Sound Project is now complete, while the Hoboken High School project should be completed in December with the addition of new curtains, house LED lighting, sound system, and repairs to the auditorium seats. And just some notes from the meeting. Additional facade work needed to be done at Brant after the work completed over a year ago. The SDA has begun this week. Flowers and tree pits will be changed in front of each school and the Board, not the city of Hoboken is responsible. And finally, all of the playgrounds were inspected successfully except for Wallace. There were some cracks in a portion of the playground. 700 square feet needs to be replaced. The work will begin when the weather cools off, most likely end of September, start of October. It will be done when the kids are not in... When the students are not in school, and will cost $20,000, but it will be covered by the warranty. That's all for this month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Biancomano. Ms. Angley, do you have finance report?
The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, September 7th at 10:00 a.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Kleffel, Ms. Sobolov, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for Board approval. Just a few things to point out. Item number 10.03, approval of tuition contracts. There is one new out-of-district tuition contract, and the committee discussed seeing a year-over-year comparison to quantify costs rolling off versus new contracts added. In 10.04, approval of contracts, I just wanted to point out that items X, Y, and Z are contracts with Catapult Learning for non-public student services, so these are actually pass-through dollars. We get state and federal funding that we kind of... The district serves as a middleman to take the dollars in and then pass them along to Catapult for them to service non-public schools. And as Mr. Biancomano noted for item AA in his facilities report, the district is looking to install a water filtration system at food service prep locations. The installation cost will be $4,500, and the annual cost for equipment rental maintenance, et cetera, will be $13,500. We'd like to thank the Wallace parent team for donation for the assembly of Prismatic Magic, and we also discussed that each school has consistent assembly themes and opportunities. Other items discussed were the lease purchases, including the field and the other items that were improved over the summer, and we are waiting the approval from the Commissioner of Education for the ground lease and are ready to go on the equipment lease. That's it.
Thank you. And Ms. Evans, you have governance and personnel report.
Okay. Is that one working? Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay. So the Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, September 7th, from 6:00 to 7:30. In attendance were myself, Ms. Montgomery, Ms. Sobolov, Mr. Kleffel, and Dr. Johnson. The committee reviewed all consent agenda items, and we recommend all for approval tonight. I'll just mention a few items that raised questions. Item 9.09, this is the approval of co-curricular advisors. We discussed that approval of these items gives the district the ability to compensate club advisors should the clubs be held. So if there isn't enough interest in a club, it's not held and the stipend is not paid. Item 9.11 is the approval of the Uniform Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials. This is something that is on the agenda every year, and people generally wonder what it is, so we wanted to mention that the objective of the agreement is to ensure cooperation between law enforcement and education officials and to protect the educational environment. Item 9.21, you'll see we're approving staff for the musical working, so I would just ask everyone to mark their calendars with the dates for another great show. It's on February 10th, 11th, and 12th, and again, it's the musical working. Item 9.26 is approval of work-study agreement between the Stevens Institute of Technology and Hoboken Board of Education. This reflects another great partnership with Stevens. About 15 Stevens work-study students will be added to our after-school work pool, and they will... The students will be paid by Stevens. And we discussed another item. Dr. Johnson's merit goals for the 2015-2016 school year were submitted to the county superintendent for assessment, and I'm glad to say that both of the qualitative goals were met and two of the three quantitative. And also, Dr. Johnson is donating back her payment for these goals back to the district. So I did want to take this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Johnson and to thank her for all of her hard work and her commitment to the district and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Board members have questions or comments on committee reports?
I have one. I was going to bring it up during...
Okay.
I was going to bring it up before the agenda, but might as well bring it up now. In terms of the memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials... So we're passing an agreement tonight that wasn't in the backup. There was no backup on this. So, and again, I understand the reasoning that Ms. Evans gave, but I still think it's a little vague. What specifically does the agreement say? Does it say that we're going to have police officers under school? Does it say that we're going to have police officers at our athletic events? And is there any clause associated?
Are you looking at me because you want me to answer? Or you would like to? Say it again? Oh, do you want to? Okay. All right. So the memorandum of agreement is a document that is signed annually between every school district and their local law enforcement. We did talk about the actual agreement. It's probably about, what do you think, 400 pages? It's really... It's about this fat, so we were not able to upload and scan the whole document in, but by all means, we can give you a copy of it to take a look at it. It actually has nothing at all to do with things like coverage at sporting events or anything along those lines. It's actually an agreement that outlines the protocol for the requirements of safety drills, lockdown drills, active shooter drills, fire drills, when they're required to happen, how many times, when they have to be submitted, the reports. It has more to do with that. It also deals with protocol from the prosecutor's office, so how events need to be reported and the chain of command for reporting of those events. Believe it or not, even though it's an agreement that we sign with the local law enforcement, it really doesn't have a whole lot to do with our local police department, other than processes and procedures, but nothing along the lines of salaries or payments or local events.
Okay, so it's almost a blueprint in case we have a lockdown event or it tells us the steps we need to take, especially with all the events that have occurred in the last...
That's correct.
Oh, thank you.
I could add, I had the privilege of being at the signing. It was almost a... It was held at Union City?
Union City.
Union City High School, and representatives of every Hudson County school district and every municipality law enforcement and state law enforcement were there, really talking about, you know, as school safety issues continue to evolve and... It's exactly as you said, it sets the blueprint for, in an emergency, who contacts who, what's the protocol involving that? I mean, that's what's all spelled out here. So there's, as you said, there's no fees or anything involved, it's simply best interest of...
And it's mandated, I'm guessing, by law?
Yeah.
Yeah, what I think the main legal virtue that it has is that it authorizes the sharing of information that would otherwise be protected by confidentiality rules that govern law enforcement and govern public educational institutions. So you would want, particularly in this day and age, for law enforcement to be able to share with the superintendent, the superintendent to have the authority to share with the building principal, certain information about an ongoing investigation that otherwise would be confidential, but that benefits law enforcement to make sure the school officials know there's an issue, there's a potential incident, there's something that they're looking into, and similarly permits schools to share information that would otherwise be confidential with law enforcement. It doesn't rise the level of a crime to be investigated, but certainly you want to let law enforcement know if there's certain chatter or certain information to give law enforcement insights that they otherwise might not have. So it promotes a two-way sharing of information, and legally, that, in my view, is its greatest legal virtue, is it eliminates barriers to communication that existed before this document.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Dr. Gold?
I was thinking of going to executive session, but I don't feel the need to if I'm allowed to ask a question about the MOA in terms of health benefits in public. So I'm going to ask my attorney, can I ask it in public or do I have to go in executive session?
I don't know what the question is, so it's hard for me to say.
I want to know if it's equivalent to the HEA contract in terms of tier four to tier three.
I think we... I think that's a direct question, yeah.
So we could wait... So we could... I can't hear. So I could ask that in public and we won't have to go in executive session, right?
I think there are other reasons to go into executive session, but that question is appropriate for a public question and answer.
Okay. For my only reason to go in executive session is if I want to know that along with the pay increases that are stipulated, are we also reducing tier four to tier three, and after they reach tier four, it's frozen?
It's the same?
The answer's yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know in executive session.
I would like to go into... Is this working? Can you hear me? I'd like to go into closed session to discuss that, since Monica's gone and I have some questions to ask.
Yeah, we're prepared for that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on committee reports?
Is there any possible way you can... Maybe it's on the loading, we're just... Nor you're going to ask, just to be there. just needs to be there.
But hearing no other questions, public comments on agenda items would be the next on the agenda. Mr. Moffett, is there anybody?
Pat Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. I have a couple of questions on these enrichment program prices, the after-school program. I'm looking over at the one for Connor's School, $21 per hour, per student, $11 per hour, and so on and so forth. And a few parents asked me too about that program. And these prices are a little pricey from some of the ones that I was confronted by. And I was also told that there's a waiting list. I mean, the school year just started. So, could you just jot that down and look into that? I appreciate it. Thank you. I just wanted to place that on the record.
Okay. Real quick, the, there is no waiting list for the after-school program in any school, including Connor's. Because it is after-care as well as enrichment courses, we're not closing it out to any family or any child. The only thing is, some of our classes are capped at the number of students in different enrichment classes, but there are seats available in every single school for different, different things. If someone doesn't get a class that they want this time, they'll get to potentially select it the next time that we offer it. But the after-school program itself, there's no waiting list at all.
But the parent is responsible for this fee, I'm saying.
No. So, the other piece of that is, the program at Connor's is running a little bit differently than the program at Brant, Calabro, and Wallace, in the sense that we applied for a special grant at Connor's School through the Family Friendly Center and we received it. So, these amounts that are on here are only on there to do one of two things. They either are on there to satisfy our requirement for the board to approve an agreement with the vendor to tell us how much we're going to be paying out of the grants. Or what it does is, it tells us if it's a program that isn't necessarily covered by the grant, then that program will be covered by the after-school account that we have. And that after-school account that we have is a combination of previous year's revenues and this year's collection from families that do not qualify for free or reduced lunch. So, there's no cost.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
For your clarification.
Were there other speakers, Mr. Moffett?
Just that one speaker.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Then it would be time, as I said, for us to go into executive session to discuss, I think, one personnel issue and on some ongoing litigation, both of which qualify us legitimately for a closed session. We're estimating that it might be.
Five minutes for me.
Five minutes and.
I just have questions out there.
Okay. So, maybe 15, 15, 20 minutes? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Okay. I have a motion to resume from Irene and a second from Brittany. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, I apologize to the public. We will now vote on the consent agenda. I would like to make one notice here, I've just been told, on item 9.31. I'm sorry, is that 9.?
Yeah, 9.31.
Which jumps from the second half of 9.31, the page, there's a column and the name Nori Rojas. It's a, an error. Her name should appear on item 9.32 as one of the people in the pool to deliver enrichment opportunities at the non-certificated rate.
What's the name?
Nori Rojas.
Oh, the last name should go on the.
Yeah.
Her name should, instead of 9.31, actually be on 9.32. Okay, with that, is there any discussion about the consent agenda? I'm sorry, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Has been motioned in?
I'd like to pull one item out of the consent agenda.
Hmm? I'm sorry, I got confused with this thing. So, with that change now, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Tom, if I want to have a consent agenda except for one item, what's the proper thing for me to do?
I need, I need the motion.
Yeah, okay. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Second, Mr. Madigan, second?
Now, I'm sorry, is there any discussion?
I'd like to vote on 2 dot 26, approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education and the administrators. I'd like to separate that one out.
9.26.
Is it 9.26?
9.26.
Anybody else?
Tom, I was just curious, we spoke about other resolutions, are they going to be part of the consent agenda or they're going to be voted on separately?
No.
That has to be a live item.
Oh, oh, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I could, I could read the one.
I'm sorry, I lost track of that.
I could add that as a separate item. What number do we have available?
Well, I'd like to pull that one in off before you put it on the consent agenda. I would have it separate, 1.0, sorry. That. So.
Okay, so we'll do that separately.
That's gonna be subject to a separate vote, it's not part of the consent agenda.
Okay. Because it's not on the agenda yet, that's.
Okay. Fair enough.
With the exception of 9.26, are we ready to vote on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, I will. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Okay, I have a few. 9.40, I abstain. 12.02, on D and H, I say yes. On E, F, and G, I abstain. And everything else, yes.
Have it. 9.40 was?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Good, that's what I have. I recorded you yes, except for 9.40 as an abstain. And as it relates to 12.02, D and H is recorded as a yes. DFG is an abstention?
No, EFG.
EFG is, you're abstaining on those.
Abstain.
Correct, okay. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Mr. Klufel?
Yes. Now, we will vote on 9.26.
Do you want to have discussion first or?
I need a motion? I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about supervisor contract in relationship to the contract that we signed with the Educational Association. In fact, I was surprised that there wasn't more discussion about the contract we signed with the HEA. The teachers gave an incredible amount of their time back to us, but we bought it for approximately 13 to 15 percent over three years. So, that contract cost us, for the first three years, either 13 or 15 percent. However, the union would argue they gave considerable amount of time to us and that was a bargain. Nobody minds paying teachers money. But there were two issues about the teacher's contract that were structural that I think we have to be concerned about. The first is the number of steps that are in the teacher's contract. When I started, there were 10, the union negotiated very happily, to be 12 steps. A 12-step contract means that after 12, 11 years, you're at the top of your pay grade. Also, something I never realized, but I learned on the board, is that if you give, let's say, a 5 percent pay increase, all teachers do not get the 5 percent. It's a pool of money that then, through union rules and union's sense of fairness, gets distributed unequally. If you've been here longer, you're gonna get more money than if you've only been here a year or so. And based upon the different steps, you can actually have a huge increase of $10,000, while if you're at a low pay grade, a low step, you can get a few hundred. Again, that's not for the board to decide, that's a union issue and, you know, that's why you have unions. But it does have implications for the board because as the school system gets better and better, teachers are gonna stay here longer and longer. And when they stay here longer and longer, I see a world of very happy teachers, all making the maximum amount that you can make. In fact, if you start as a teacher when you're 26 years old, when you're 37, you're gonna be at the top of the pay grade. God bless you for that. However, that is a liability that the school board better prepare for in the future. No problem, but it's something we have to prepare for. The next part of the contract was, not only did we give a raise, but we subsidized their health care, which I understand, they were paying out of their salary, a significant amount of their income towards their health plan that in the old days was free. But when Christie came in, he said, hey, you're gonna have to pay, what's the number, 78 or 72, whatever the rules. But they said, listen, the union negotiated, and I would do that if I was the union, I want you to reduce the amount of money that we pay into our health plan. You, as the Board of Education, as part of our salary, you'll pay us the increase, but you'll reduce something from tier three, I'm sorry, from tier four to tier three, which is essentially more money in their pocket. Again, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I voted for that contract. But after three or four years, the contract that I approved says, any increase in payments towards your health plan will stop and the board will have to subsume all those additional increases. We're not gonna see this problem till three or four years, but in three or four years, we are going to have to pay any increase in the health plan that is above their tier four. If my description of this is incorrect, please, I'm sure somebody will tell me that I'm wrong. So, what we have now is, I think, a very fair teacher contract where they did give up a lot of their time and we did give, I believe, a substantial pay increase for that. Now, what does this have to do with the supervisor contracts? Well, the supervisors did give up their steps. There are no steps for the supervisor contract. Superintendent now can bring them in at any level that they agree to. And so, the issue of the number of steps isn't an issue. However, what is an issue is that they're gonna have the same health, and the word subsidy sounds wrong, we're going to take away from them an onerous burden that the administration, Christie and those guys, put on them. Okay, that's part of the negotiation, but if you give everybody a 3 percent raise a year and then subsid, and then take away about a percent of this amount of money they have to pay, and it's probably more since they're higher-paid people, the percentage of their salary they were paying is higher, the raise comes out to be about 13 percent over three years. Again, I don't have any problem with that, even though I'm not gonna vote for it. What I do have a problem with is that we need to be able to project in the future what these expenses are gonna be. So, for example, in the future, we have all these great programs that the superintendent put in place, Project Lead the Way, New Science Labs, After Care. There's also Passport to Learning. The superintendent, I think as a miracle worker, has been able to work with the budget to give us all these things. So far, everything is going well. We're gonna be able to support a very good teacher contract, a very good superintendent contract was offered, not superintendent, a supervisor contract was offered, but there should be a warning sign. The warning should be, in three years from now, can we support this spending or is an onerous tax increase going to have to happen? Christie's 2 percent cap, which I believed, and I made a number of comments believing that cap was real, isn't real. His cap is a sieve. There are all sorts of waivers and additional taxes and exceptions that enabled us last year, I think, to raise the taxes about 4 percent. So, I have complete faith in the superintendent. I see wonderful things happening, but I would like to have a guarantee that my school taxes aren't gonna go up more than 2 percent a year. So, what I'm gonna propose at the next meeting, which might be voted up or might be voted down, is that the board, even though they might have the ability to raise taxes more than 2 percent, promises not to raise taxes more than 2 percent a year. If the superintendent and the board can live with that, the superintendent is responsible enough and caring enough that the teacher raises, the supervisor raises, and all these great programs that are happening can function without really hurting the taxpayers. So, I think I changed my mind a little. I am going to make the assumption that next board meeting, the board will be responsible enough to vote for a 2 percent tax cap, a real one. And I'm gonna assume that enough planning went into the supervisor memorandum of agreement and the teacher memorandum of agreement and everything that the school needs. And if we can live, do all these things within a 2 percent, who am I to object to this, which I think is very generous, 13 percent, 13 percent tax increase? I mean, 13 percent wage increase. So, let me be very specific what I'm saying. I'm saying if the school can live with the commitment to only raise taxes 2 percent and the administration feels we can support the upcoming liabilities, which aren't liabilities, but expenses of the teacher's contract, can come up with the expenses of the supervisor contract, and can provide for the necessary resources for our students, who am I to object to it? So, in fact, I changed my mind. I am gonna vote for this memorandum, but it's with the understanding that I hope in the future, which is next month, when I propose this motion, people will commit to the 2 percent cap. If they don't commit to the 2 percent cap, then I think the taxpayers of Hoboken are gonna be in for a surprise. So, I am very clear, I am not criticizing the teacher's contract, I voted for it, they gave up a lot, we gave up a lot. I'm not criticizing as much the supervisor contract because I guess that contract is an article of faith. My concern is that we will be able to pay for everything we need within, without having to raise taxes more than 2 percent. So, I'm gonna be very impotent because a lot of people are gonna argue 2 percent is too much. And I'm sure some people argue, you're handcuffing us, who are you to say you should only raise taxes 2 percent? But that's my thought and that's what I'm gonna do next month. So, I guess if the. So I guess if there are no comments, you can vote a vote, but how many votes?
Thank you, Dr. Gold. Any other comments? Call the vote.
Nine point two six calling the roll. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Roff, the next thing is this new resolution that you will read.
Right, I could read the one, and there's two issues, right? One is contractual, contract issue, and the second resolution would be a hiring resolution. Right. I'll read the contract resolution first. It's ten point zero seven. Be it resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education approves and authorizes the business administrator to negotiate and execute appropriate contract documentation with Esmer Payroll Processing, DBA Aspire Payroll, for a full-time temporary employee to provide payroll services at an estimated monthly cost of $8,000 to extend through such time as a subject position is filled.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
And we have one more resolution.
I'll do the other.
Please.
The Hoboken Board of Education appoints Sean Smith as, as in position of accounts payable, purchasing specialist in the business office at a salary of $44,223.
Motion.
Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss something on this. Do we have to motion it first?
Yeah. Oh, motion, I'll make my.
Second.
Motion, second. Right now, discussion?
I, my discussion is, I'm concerned, we spoke about this in closed session, it was on the.
You can't vote.
My concern is, it was on the agenda at two o'clock this afternoon, it was taken off, now we're back on it. We're paying this gentleman $44,223. Also not in here is, we're going to have to pay his company that he was attempting another $3,000, so it's really $47,000 this year we're paying for this person. Now, it's someone that's brand new, just out of college. This position was done by a clerk before, probably at a lower rate, and we're talking about raising our taxes coming up. This is, again, when I go on my contract grants, when I won't pass a lot of contracts that we get through, through the business office, this is another one of those things. $47,000 we're paying this year for this person. I just think we went too high on our salary, and we, we all come, come when it's budget time, we're all going to say, oh, we got to cut, we got to cut. We're going to cut this program, we're going to cut here, but we should have started this salary a lot lower. And, I mean, again, it's not forty-four this year, it's forty-seven. All right? So when, when we think, as we're voting on this issue, you have to remember this, when it comes out, that we need more money, that we don't want to raise more than two percent, like board member Dr. Gold's saying, well, the money has to come from somewhere, so each time we give out a little extra to someone else, a little extra here on a contract or a person, the money keeps adding up. So remember this, when it's, when it's budget time, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Madigan. Any other discussion? Can call the vote?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
No.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes, just for clarification, we're, he's a temporary now, we're paying a certain amount of money per month for a temporary, right? So if he, if this position isn't filled, we continue to pay those thousands a month for a temporary person in this position.
Right, as, as I communicated before, right, I would pay, pay for a full-time.
I'd rather it be seen filled as a permanent position.
But we also could have hired someone at a lower, we could have hired at a lower position, now, that's all I'm asking, now, we could have hired someone at a lower position, we didn't have to offer that much.
Yes.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
I think it's time for public comments on non-agenda items. Are there any speakers?
Yes, I have two. First speaker listed is Melanie, it looks like Terrian? Terrian?
Hi, Melanie Takarian, eight nineteen Washington Street. So hello, welcome back. We're really excited about the new year and the beginning of the new school year. My first grader is loving school, and we're excited about that. A couple of things that I just had some questions about that I'm hoping that maybe Dr. Johnson, that you could address either tonight or at some point in an upcoming session. You've talked a number of times about the changes that have happened with the middle school and the high school. It was alluded to in the letter home about the orientation of her parents who have children in the middle school, but I think for the public at large, we would love to know more about what has changed, maybe more specifically. So that would be something we would love to hear about. And then, secondly, last year at the end of the year, you talked a bit about the expanding population of students, especially at the lower grades, and adding classrooms at Brant for, I think, first grade, and I'm just wondering, again, maybe today or at some future point, if you would talk about space planning and student population planning for Hoboken. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Next speaker is Ms. Patty Waiters.
Thank you, Patty Waiters, Road thirty-three Park Avenue. Just a few things. Welcome back. Schools open. Everyone watching this, please drive safe and carefully. Try to instill in your kids to take their earphones out their ear and cross the street and be real alert. I'm going to speak to Chief Aranthi too, to try to help me, you know, be a strong advocate with the crossing guards and also the traffic control officers. It's very important, I understand some parents do call, because I'm one, to make sure my kid is at school safe, but try to teach them that that phone and their safety is more important than getting across the street safe. We got people, where I live on Park Avenue, going to New York in the morning, coming down the block like a freeway. I'm going to see, could I get more speed bumps put on the street? But please, schools open, drive safely, be careful when you're making right turns. I noticed a lot of people are already in the intersection. Just this last three days, I see people like missing seconds from being hit or struck by a car. So that's just for all the crazy drivers, too, slow down. I got my radar on, I'll be watching. I intend to open house. I really don't have nothing to say tonight, so that's a miracle, I know everybody's saying that, that's watching this. I have two words, very good. I walked around the school with Dr. Johnson, it was my pleasure, down to the free, good food. You see the crowd you got out, right? I was right. We only had standing room, jam-packed, the classrooms excellent, the fresh paint, made it look like we in another whole new building. Beautiful, everything is good. Classroom size decreased drastically. I was very impressed. I sat in a classroom last year with my son, almost twenty-something students, in the late twenties, my son came on, mommy, it's twelve of us in the class. I say, yeah, you going in, you be good too. So you don't have no excuse that you're saying you're being distracted. The science lab, everything, the list goes on. Mothers can assure the safety because the way the building is actually sectioned off, it looked like it's two different schools. In and out, I've been there every morning, well, ten minutes to seven the first day, but to see the dismissal and everything going smooth, I'm wishing the best, I'm staying optimistic that it will stay that way, what I'm witnessing now. Dr. Johnson, again, in such a short time, I'm sorry, I had to eat my words, I told you that, that I come to this microphone, I don't care who the superintendent you bring, I come up to this microphone with the pit bull attitude and say, listen, what are you doing here, my municipality? I hope you're a good superintendent. I had to eat my own words. You're doing a wonderful job, keep up the good work. Welcome, Dr. Patrick Fitzhugh, I seen you there too. I mean, with your little troupe on and your little hat on, and you do a good job. So I just wanted to say I'm happy with the school district and the way it's going, and it looks like it's headed in a good direction. And a few things, while Mr., Dr. Gold was mentioning about the thirteen percent increase in the contracts, I wrote before he even said it about the two percent by Governor Christie because that did raise concerns when you were speaking. I'm seeing it all the time, I understand what the two percent is, but I've seen this all the time with contracts, how some people put a cap on it and say a not-to-exceed amount, and certain boards find a way to go around that and change it anyway, and that could be real disturbing for people, you know, members of the public not knowing what's going on. But I've seen it happen a lot. Oh, we'll take forty thousand. Oh, we had extra work that we had hidden in the cracks. Let's vote on the not-to-exceed amount. So you got to be real careful, and things like that, it's issues that, you know, a bell goes off in my head because I watch every penny, down to the last seventy-nine cents. So that's another issue that I want you to look in. And other than that, like I said, schools open, drive safely, Pat Waiters, good job, Dr. Johnson, keep up the good work. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Do you want to address the middle school and expanded population? Do you want to prepare a presentation for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think, if, if it's okay, what I'll do, rather than kind of go off the cuff with the middle school improvements and specifics, as well as the space planning and enrollment planning as well, I'll prepare a presentation on both of them for the next meeting, just so you know, and we'll advertise and publicize that to the parents as well. Okay.
But I, I feel obligated to clarify one thing, that when it comes to exceeding the two percent, it's not a, not to exceed amounts. Say we are educating a hundred children for, you know, a hundred dollars, and we're allowed a two percent increase. If our enrollment increases a hundred and fifty students, you know, by fifty students, the state allows the budget to increase by this, by a percentage amount, there's a complicated formula that just simply recognizes the increased enrollment. So there's, there's no games that are being played by the board, we're not finding ways to raise taxes. We are simply utilizing, in the past couple of years, the one or two, it's enrollment increase and benefit cost increases that allow us to exceed that two percent. I'm not arguing about keeping the cap on, I'm just saying that it's not related to a not-to-exceed amount.
Okay, I feel I have to at least address that. We did have a real money problem. We had a lot of charter school expansions, we had a lot of programs we had to do, we raised taxes a lot. The real question is, we have more taxing authority than I actually believed we did. I mean, I, I'm an idiot, I believed Christie. I thought, when he said that there's a two percent cap, there really was a two percent cap. There's not a two percent cap. I mean, there is a cap, but you saw we were able to raise taxes four percent last year, and we needed to do it. I'm not criticizing anybody, I voted for it. But it will reach a point where you decide, when do you have to start cutting internally, or when do you have to go out to the community? My point is, the taxpayer is not this endless source of money that you can go to, even though legally we're allowed to do that. And I'm not a big fan of caps, but I'm, I'm bringing this up, and when I'm no longer on the board, you can get rid of it. But the point I'm trying to say is that I don't want the attitude to be, well, we deserve it, or the kids need better classrooms, so let's just spend the money. It's good to spend money, but it, you need a balance, and I'm just struggling so hard with what is this balance? And that's what I'm saying. And all this spending that we did, I'm not washing my hands of it, I voted for it. I'm just saying that the board eventually now is going to have to take some stance about finances because we actually are on pretty good footing now. I mean, the contracts, we feel we could pay for for at least the next four years. I think both sides agree, they were very fair and good contracts. Both sides gave a lot. But going forward, what are we going to do? And that's my, my point. My point isn't we taxed without having the ability, but the question is, because you can tax and get more money, should you? And it's a tough discussion, and I'm not going to be here to be part of that discussion. So that's my point.
If there's no other discussion, then we will, it's that time, we're going to go into executive session again, this time to interview candidates for the board vacancy over there. We may come back into, well, we will have to come back to close the meeting. When we come back, we may vote on appointing a candidate. So with, with that advisory, we'll probably be in the executive session, I would guess, for at least an hour, hour and a half. You're welcome to stay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Becky, I need a motion to come back into?
Motion.
Second.
We've just come back from executive session, from candidate interviews. As a result of that, is there?
Let's go, do I make a motion?
I would, I would like to make a motion that we wait to the meeting of October eleventh to pick the open seats to give the board members, to give the members more time to review the applications and the resumes.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Can I make another motion, or do we?
No, we have to vote on this one.
You have to vote on this motion. Okay.
Call the vote. Mr. Roff, you have it?
Yep. Call the roll. Ms. Angley?
No.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
No.
Dr. Gold?
No.
Mr. Madigan?
No. Yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
No.
And Ms., Mr. Cluffell?
No.
Resolution fails?
I, I'd like to make a motion. We've had four great interviews, and the horrible thing about only having to suggest one person is you're scared to death, you're going to, you're going to encourage three people to drop out, and this is, this is really difficult because all three interviews were, well, four interviews are quite wonderful, and I hope you all run for school board. However, I'm going to make a motion to nominate Mark McNamara for the interim seat.
Second.
Second, who's who? I read. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
I would like to say a few words, and I, I agree with Leon, we have four really, really excellent candidates, and all four of you were so excellent that I'm just not ready to make a decision tonight. I'm really not, and that's why I made the motion. I think that if we look at the last time we were in this situation with an open seat, the board member at that time didn't even finish out her term, and I think that more research needed to be done, in my opinion. So I'm going to abstain tonight, Mark, this has nothing to do with you because you are as excellent as anybody else, so I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Again, I just think every time we rush into it, like the teacher's contract, we had to vote that night when we got the information. Tonight, we got the information for the supervisor's contracts, we had to vote tonight. Again, there's four great candidates, all four of you spoke very well inside, I was very well, but for us to make a decision, you're going to sit on this board for a year without being voted on. It's just, it's nothing personal to Mark, but the other three candidates are being slighted by us just not doing more homework than one day we received the background just yesterday on us, and then today we're voting, we, we use each fifteen minutes, so I'm abstaining.
Ms. Montgomery?
I'd like to thank all the candidates tonight for their involvement in the community and the school so far. I would like more time to think about these things, but I do want to keep moving the district forward. We have really good momentum, and I'd like to definitely encourage everyone who's doing things in the district to continue to help our children, but I, and with that, though, I do vote yes for Mark.
Ms. Sobolov?
I also wanted to thank everybody for coming. All four candidates were so unique and passionate in different ways, and so I wanted to thank everybody and encourage them to keep involved in the schools and for the kids, and I vote yes.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Motion pa- Motion passes with six affirmative votes.
Motion to close? So with that, the appointment has been voted on and approved, that Mark McNamara will fill the vacancy. Is there a motion to close?
Motion. Before you, before we close, do we want to swear in tonight? Ten wishmen in tonight?
Does he have to get the background?
Does there need to be fingerprints?
Because we had to get a background check first--
We could wait, but--
That's morning.
Yeah. Yes, we can swear tonight.
Is it by law, you're allowed to?
Yeah, I think they have like 30--
Yeah.
Yeah, 30, 30 days.
Unless they want, they can come back, but--
Well, we--
We could do it in the office, I've done that before, if we have a small gathering, it's up to board, board's pleasure.
We can do it tonight, Mark. Are you prepared to be sworn in tonight?
Or would you like your family here? Or his family here? To have his family here, maybe. It's up to him.
Bill said he could, Mr. Muffet said he could swear in.
I could swear in, yeah, I could swear in tonight, I could swear in in my office, you know, another date. We could schedule another time, it's up to the board, but if all options are available, whatever the board's pleasure.
Let's do it, let's do it now.
Do now? Raise your right arm. Aye, state your name.
Mark McNamara.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will hear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the government established in the United States?
And to the government, governments established in the United States?
And this state?
And this state.
And the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mark McNamara.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications?
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education?
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I am, I am not disqualified as a voter?
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant RS 194. That's a lot, right?
Pursuing--
Pursuant appropriate law?
Pursuant to appropriate law.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime?
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Listed in appropriate statute?
Listed in appropriate statute.
And that I will faithfully, impartially?
And I will faithfully, impartially.
And justly perform all the duties?
And justly perform all the duties.
Of that office?
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome to board.
Thank you.
Second.